President of the Board of Education. Are there any other nominations to the President of the Board of Education? With no nominations, I now declare nominations closed. We will vote for the President of the Board of Education. So we have motions by Carrie John and seconded by Sue Bries nomination of Teresa Ray to the Office of President of the Board of Education. We'll do a roll call vote. Colton?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Bries?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
And White.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I now declare nominations open for election of Vice President of the Board of Education. We have a nomination of Carrie John for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any other nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education? None being said, I now declare nomination closed. So we have a motion by Teresa Ray, seconded by Dale Colton for nomination of Carrie John to the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education. And we now do a roll call vote. Colton?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Bries?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
And White.
Aye.
Congratulations. We'll do the Oval Office for Board President and then Vice President.
I Teresa Ray, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education as the next Board of Education.
Congratulations.
I Carrie John, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education as President according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're now going to administer the Oval Office from Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent. It's kind of nice when we're sitting next to each other. Congratulations. Our Superintendent was sworn into office on June 30th, but again, we're going to serve him to office in public. So if you raise your right hand, combine two.
I Mark D. Beeler, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent of School according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Very much.
Thank you. Just kidding. I Karen Esme Gary, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Assistant Superintendent for finance and operations according to the best of my ability. And congratulations. The next President Teresa Ray will assume leadership of the meeting at 5:30 PM.
So we need a upper management team to the agenda.
There have been key changes since the agenda was first published. One, our typos are named that did not change the agenda. One person had her last name legally changed, so that it was to the correct meaning. We also removed a bus driver who no longer employed with us from the recruitment list. And there were changes to the IP that reflect the change in venue, specifically from the Hennepin Community Center to the Largely Recruited Room and High School, and then a transition to the second, for Tuesday, for the board.
Okay. Then we need a motion to approve the agenda with the changes that Dr. Beeler mentioned. Who? Okay, motion by Sue, seconded by Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. Item seven is a consideration of regular regulations. So we need a motion.
Nope, I'm sorry. My fault, my fault, I apologize.
Didn't know if I just couldn't read them.
No, I thought that was under consent, I'm sorry. That's a long, long 35 page document.
Sure. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the consideration of regular regulations. Motion. Motion by Carrie, seconded by Brad. Oh, was it Brad? I'm sorry. Can't hear anymore either. So I have a motion by Carrie, seconded by Brad. Apologize, are there any questions on any of the resolutions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Carrie. As far as Title VI, we haven't had one since the 26th before I left. Were you severely known in the information we've got on? Did they have any motion?
Yeah, yeah. And we were looking at the email, email pool to certify it, but still processing orders here. So really nothing against Title VI. If you're interested, come on by.
We'll go ahead and central office message. So, yeah.
I have a couple of things actually. We're chatting with about which transportation. And our buses and vans can cost us not to travel more than 150,000 miles in the upper half of the year. So a lot of buses on the road, a lot of buses and vans on the road, 150,000 miles more is quite a bit. So, a lot of buses on the road, a lot of buses and vans on the road, 150,000 miles more is quite a bit. Secondly, me and my entire department are gearing up for the audits. We've got a lot of that going on as well as closing out the year and starting the new year and like stuff. So everybody that thinks we have the summer off, it's our busiest time. And we do not have summer. And lastly, there may be articles in the paper, on the news, et cetera, about USDA not continuing with the program where they had students receiving free lunch and breakfast. That was across the country. It is going away for next year. However, because we are a CEP school, our kids will still have a big breakfast to eat much. Want anybody to panic if you didn't see that, you know, happen to see it in the news. So there are a lot of schools that will have to be charging again. Their breakfast lunch, which is only CEP for two years, we're not going through.
We'll move on to board message. Ed, how about you start with you?
Yeah, just welcoming everybody to the summer months. Yeah, it's nice to have air conditioning. It's amazing how we haven't got any rain this summer, whereas last year it was always raining. Yeah. No, just happy to be here. Officially sworn in again, most kind of. Yeah. And then just still learning. The, it's amazing how much stuff there is to try to grasp when you first get into this position. Every time you think you've answered something, it just turns into another question. But we're getting there and I look forward to it. I wish everybody that some of they can add.
Yeah, I think what Echo what Ted said in summer months. The time to enjoy the outdoors and everything like that. And I too, I have to keep my nose very close to it. There's a lot of things that's distributed and stay under control, you know, watch a lot. I too have really enjoyed it thus far. Anyway, yeah, it's quite a learning curve, you know, with all the information. I'm having a good time.
Good. Sue? The graduation was very nice. I congratulate all of the graduates. And thank the teachers for giving them a seat. Hopefully, 10 years from now, they all appreciate you as much as I appreciate my own teachers. Sure don't at the time, but to learn to understand why and what they taught you. So thank you very much, teachers. Whoever helped us. Brad?
Our congratulations.
Also just a reminder for everyone, we'll check out the school website. If you want to go to kids in the comments.
Thanks Brad.
Dale? I'd like to officially welcome Ed. So again, congratulations on your elections. Also, congratulations to Carrie. And Mark?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And I look forward to turning the page from 2021 to 2022. What we can do.
Well, first of all, thank you, my colleagues, for supporting me as Vice President of the School Board. It really means a lot. I think these are important roles that Teresa and I have been filling. Of course, she's been filling the president now for a couple of kids. But no, I appreciate it and I thank you guys. There is a little bit of extra work involved when we're in the office, so. But it's important work. It's all important. Appreciate you guys having confidence in me to be as your Vice President. Same, welcome our two board members, Ted and Brad officially. I know you guys took your oath, but today you made the big TV, so it's official. Mark, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted to thank all of our staff who are working this summer. You know, as Karen mentioned, like there's some staff who are working, they have to work. But we also have a pile of staff members who don't have to work and who aren't. You know, that's going above and beyond in my book. And I appreciate everything that all you are doing to help our kids with their education needs. You know, that's, it's not unnoticed and we do appreciate it. You know, I appreciate it. I live with an educator and I have an educator who actually is working this summer as well. So I, I hear about the commitment. You know, there's always that notion that a lot of teachers, a lot of staff will be in the summer. That's just not true. You know, even the ones who don't take a summer position are still working. They're still talking about the past year and they're still talking about having to come here. They're still working. They're, they're that diligent, they still do this kind of stuff. So it's, it doesn't go unnoticed and it is appreciated. Again, thank you to all the staff who are working this summer. Whether you have to be here or whether you're doing it voluntarily or whether it's just something to stay on top of hands. Thank you. Everyone enjoy your summer and looking forward to the next school days and when you're looking forward to.
Well, yeah, I'm looking forward to the snow flying. When, when it gets hot like it has been and the bugs are out, I just, I just can't wait for two piece of snow. But no, you know, I'm always excited when it's time to go back to school. You know, it's always a new beginning, it's always a new opportunity and look at where our kids can go and we'll see where they go.
And also, I thought Carrie said, thanks to my colleagues for electing me to be the President yet again. I do take pride in it and I'm excited I can communicate with the Board of Education. We, we don't always see eye to eye, but we always come out with the same priority, which is what's best for the district and what's best for the kids. And so I appreciate everybody supporting us. And also again, welcome to Ted and Brad. It's exciting to have a whole board again that we can make decisions on and not have to worry about election being here. So that's kind of nice. And Dr. Beeler, who became Superintendent, I'm excited to see what new initiatives we have going. And just like Carrie said, you know, it is really underrated that the teachers who don't have to work are still coming in and doing a ton of professional development. How many professional development hours do we have? I was at a graduation party and I was talking to a couple of teachers and they were saying how they were signed up for the board session this week. So it just goes to show you that people do care and they do, they're invested in the district and they want the district better, they want to make the kids better. You know, so it's exciting and I can't wait to see what our next chapter brings. So thank you everybody and I hope you have a good summer.
All right, thank you and congratulations to President Ray and Vice President John on their leadership positions. I look forward to working with you and the rest of the school board to improve teaching, learning and relationship throughout the Salamanca community. Most of our summer programs for high school students have already started, including summer school and our summer athletics program. Next week, our elementary school programs will begin. Many of our elementary students receive summer practice work. Tonight was the first popsicle with the principal and prior to the meeting, I had an opportunity to step out and several of the students right at five o'clock when it started ran up with their workbooks, showed the principal the work that they've been doing already and were rewarded with a popsicle on a high night like tonight, that's great. Professional development, as we mentioned, is well underway. Today, we hosted the first three day workshop of a three year initiative on restoring practices. Administrators, teachers and staff members from Salamanca and Alamo Yadi-Limestone participated in this event. And with regard to professional development, in our second meeting in August, Mrs. Beatty will be providing an update of everything that happened over the summer. So we'll get to hear all of the great things that have happened. And over the past week, I've had the opportunity to conduct a couple of interviews with a couple of new teachers as well as some seasoned teachers. And they are absolutely amazed, these are teachers coming from other districts, at how many staff members are in our buildings doing professional development. I don't think we recognize that there are very few districts that do as much professional development. And we will continue to offer as much professional development as our teachers are willing to take. And that really is, as Grace said, a testament to the dedication of our teachers as well as of John, that they are coming in on their summer, typically their break to improve themselves and invest in their future. This weekend is the Santa Ignatian Palual that you, that will be hosted at Feds Park. The weather looks to be great, I hope to see many of you there. I would like to acknowledge and thank the hard work of our building and ground staff, especially their leader, Rich Pankowski, who have been working really hard up to this point logistics. And now are, they may still be there putting the floor down at Feds Park. So a lot of work has gone into that and it should result in a great Palual this weekend. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve our consent agenda. Motion by Dale. Almost got it. Seconded by Dale. I was trying to really make sure I listened, I wanted to. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda? Motion by Dale, seconded by Ted, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. Do you have no old business, some of our new business? We have our contract with Universal Kindergarten Care. So we need to have a motion to approve that contract. And that's from July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2023. Motion by Sue?
Aye.
Seconded by Dale. Are there any questions on this contract? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. And these are income eligibility guidelines for 2023, which includes the places for our breakfast, lunch for adults and kids if they want extras can set to do a breakfast. So we need a motion to approve the income eligibility rates for breakfast and lunch. Motion by Brad. Seconded by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. Item J is our MOA for John Haley, who is Service Manager Training. So we need a motion to approve that MOA. Motion. Motion by Carrie. Seconded by Dale. Are there any questions on the MOA? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I will pay. Motion Dale. Item D is our Caterarist Counting Contracts. So we have a contract for independent locations for preschool. Maybe have children in a contract for related services in special education, internet services. So we need a motion to approve those Caterarist Counting Contracts.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Aye.
Seconded by Carrie. Are there any questions on either of the contracts? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. Item E is our resolution for July 12th, 2023. Board of Education, so some school district, Caterarist Counting Merit, adopting the post issuance compliance procedures. So we need a motion to approve those post issuance compliance procedures. Both. Motion by Dale. Seconded by Brad. Seconded by Brad. Do we have any questions?
All, all it is is a federal requirement, that's what she wants. This just basically sets a procedure policy as to how we have to. There's several that the quarterly filings that we have that's required, we have the procedures to tell us what.
So we got a motion by Dale, seconded by Brad. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. Item F is our Board of Education, CND committees. We're attached. We need a motion to approve the Board of Education's. We definitely got to add, is President Vice President. We didn't know what the chance. You know that when you're a boy. We need a motion to approve the Board of Education's.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie, then seconded by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. Item G is our Indian Policies and Procedures. So we need a motion to approve the IP. Motion by Dale.
Aye.
Quiet over, let's say goodbye. Are there any questions? We move to the location.
Correct, so there were three changes. The first is from the ACC to the LGI here at high school. The second was transitioning from first and third to the second, fourth, two days with the board meetings. And then the IDC meetings will be held at the high school instead of the EAS.
Okay. So we got a motion by Dale, seconded by Brad. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. Item H is our tuition rates for 2023. So we have $150 for grades A through seven, 304 grades A through 12. So we need a motion to approve those tuition rates. Okay, motion by Ted. Seconded by Brad. One last. Are there any questions on tuition rates? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. Item I is our MOA for some of the service staff organizations. We need a motion to approve the SFSMS. Motion by Carrie. Seconded by Brad. Are there any questions on them all? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion Dale. Item J is our Caterarist Counting Bureau of Children's Special Needs Program. So we need a motion to approve that resolution. Motion by Sue, sorry, second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion Kerry. We have our personnel action number one. Which is very lengthy, we're not read. We know the changes. We have our personnel action number two. And then we have our personnel action number three, so we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agendas for one, two, and three.
Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Kerry, are there any questions on any of the personnel consent agendas? We've got a motion by Dale, second by Kerry, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion Kerry. Item E is our personnel action number four. So we need a motion to approve the personnel action number four.
Motion.
Motion by Kerry.
Third.
Second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, I will abstain. Six-four, one extension, motion Kerry. Why are you, you're gonna leave it to all of them? I just wondered if, if I should have, if Emma's on here, that's why I have. No, it's, it's your choice, Sue. But I didn't see. I can't. I'll let you know if she is, Sue. And after our extended day enrichment program instructors, and the education instructors, and the active duty assignment, you know, we're. Which are listed, so we need a motion to approve that resolution, all the ways.
Motion.
Motion by Ted. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion Kerry.
I don't believe we have any new hires as far as employees to the district. Most of what you see here, or actually almost all of it, what you see here are extra duties, stipends, extracurricular athletic coaching positions, and then reappointments. And what Mr. John said earlier, if you take a look through the several pages, these are all individuals who are going really above and beyond what they signed up for initially, and a lot of that is due to their. And I also just wanted to acknowledge, take a look at all of the paperwork that Bob goes into putting this together in a matter of two short weeks, so I'd like to thank our clerk, as well as all of our HR department, putting this together.
Yeah, it's a lot of work for. A quick approval. So we'll move on to our board information, we have a bunch of policies that began for our first greetings. And then we have Waters from the attorneys. And our upcoming events. So the next upcoming event is finance on the nineteenth, and then the Board of Education meeting, which, if I can ask you to take over on those duties, the community and Blacklight. It's the day twenty-sixth of July.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so. So, everybody knows, I will not be here for that. And then we also have your Superintendent's conference day is for staff, thirty, and the thirty-first of August. Welcome back, Pickman, the townies, Sunday, and then first day of school is September sixth. And with that, we need a motion to going to executive session for the purpose of regulation and all sorts. So, motion by Sue, second by Dale, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion Kerry.
We do not, oh, yeah, we do not anticipate taking action, it'll just be for information sharing.